Good afternoon, good evening. Just want to welcome everybody to the Town Council Workshop of Monday, August 7th, 2023. We're going to begin with roll call. Counselor Gass.
Present.
Counselor Maguire.
Present.
Counselor Meany.
Present.
Counselor Height.
Here.
And I am Counselor Chapel. Okay, so this is round three, I believe, of our revised budget discussion for FY24 in preparation for a future town meeting, most likely in the beginning of September. We've had a good conversation around capital improvement projects, edits we would like to make to that. Last time we had a conversation around finalizing some items on the CIP, capital improvements, and also began our conversations around amendments to the operating expenses. Dan, you said you would like to see a firm proposed FY24 expense line for the total for the town's expenses. Is that correct?
Yeah, do we know what the total number is for the proposed FY24?
Well, we had a document from Nate on August 2nd with all the expenses. If we scroll to the bottom of that, FY24 has, this was before the edits we made last time, was nine million, six hundred twenty-five thousand dollars and six hundred, nine million, let me start again, nine million, six hundred twenty-five thousand, six hundred twenty-three So again, that would be before our conversation that we had on Thursday. Nate, do we have any figures that are more up to date than that, or is that our last?
That was the last. I sent some material to you on Friday just to follow up on edits and reductions and things that you had discussed in your meeting on Thursday.
Yeah, let me find that.
So if I look at, looking at your document, Nate, it looks like, am I reading this correctly, that we reduced CIP by one hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and fifty-two?
Yes, that's the subtotal for CIP.
Did you just do that, Matthew, on your own? Because that's not on my sheet here.
Uh, it's.
Oh, here it is. Sorry. It's all the way to the right.
Yeah, it's a calculation off of.
I'm sorry, it's just not in the column. Okay.
And we haven't spoken about all of the proposed reductions that you have on the sheet you sent us today. Is that correct?
I tabulated some of the other discussion items that you mentioned in your last meeting just as a, just to show.
Yeah.
And there were a few, a few new pieces of information that came in from town staff.
So the second number on page two of your document, the 387-905?
Yes.
Those are reductions we made at the last meeting?
That is the total of CIP and general fund budget reductions based on what I tabulated from your meeting on Thursday.
Okay, so that's the total of both?
Correct.
Do we, do you have a total for the non-CIP changes?
Do some quick math. Three eighty-seven, nine oh five minus one forty, four fifty-two equals two forty-seven, four fifty-three.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna do some quick math on my own. So nine, six, two, five, six, two, three. So that would reduce the budget to nine million, five hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven, oops, I did something wrong. Sorry, folks. Let me do that again.
Shuffling a lot of different documents.
Yeah. Definitely want to get that right.
I'm just gonna, I just need to find one other thing.
Can I have, can I ask a question while Dan's doing his calculations?
Sure.
Nate, on your spreadsheet that you sent out this morning, or this afternoon, rather, on lines two and three, those appear to me to refer to enhanced revenue.
Correct.
And I'm, so I'm wondering, they seem to be included in your, in your subtraction totals from the budget, and I'm just, I'm just kind of wondering about that.
Yeah, I'm doing a net change, so if you were to, if you were to remove those two revenues.
Thank you, yeah.
So that would be an additional seventy thousand dollars roughly?
Yeah.
To the, so added to the 387.
I want to make sure we, so, okay, so you're saying basically you want to include those as reductions?
I want to include them as revenue, so yeah, so they.
Yeah, they would increase the total that we're reducing the budget by.
Right, right, right.
But they wouldn't change the expense numbers?
They wouldn't change the expense numbers.
No.
Okay. So those should be negative, basically. So I'm gonna just make those changes right now.
Where, the second line from the funds from the DOT, those were, those were new as of last time. That's the money we're getting back?
Yeah, that is the LRAP program, and we had a projection that was around one hundred and forty-five thousand, and that projection has gone up to one hundred and sixty-seven thousand just, just Friday. I got that information from Tim Estes. He had done the calculation and submitted the form to Maine DOT. Let's do it this way. So, I'm not sure. Okay, so I've made, I can bring this change up on the screen at any point if you all like. I have to just get logged into Trio.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, Zoom.
I think how I'd like to start is, Nate, you've added some other topics for further discussion on the bottom of the document you provided, and we were working off this document a lot on Thursday, so I'd like to start there and then see where we are for totals and then maybe go department by department if necessary. And then after that, we still need to discuss a couple items. The reserve account for CIP, we still haven't decided on that, although that's one of the pending items you've included here. We also need to have confirmed what we're proposing for a bond as a warrant, and we also need to revisit the land acquisition question around the one-twelfth borrowing for, from the general fund to support land acquisition. So I'd like to revisit those after we get through any cuts we might like to make. So if you go to the bottom of Nate's worksheet, and Nate, Nate, maybe you should share this over Zoom since folks at home could follow along that way.
Can do that.
He's added some items either raised by department heads or Nate himself to discuss further. The first one is a transfer station expense in that we need to increase our well testing at, for the landfill, I guess, assume the landfill has a well here?
We have several, monitoring wells around the landfill that we use to track. Several contaminants, including PFAS, and the levels have recently increased.
Right, yes, so not dissimilar to lots of places in Maine. There's a lot of PFAS contamination at our landfill, which is potentially leaching out that we need to monitor, and so there's an increased cost there that we need to account for of three thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars. I think that's something we can, cannot do, so that's.
I would agree.
Agreed, yeah.
It's a, almost a, not quite a fourfold increase. I'm wondering, is that just because of the frequency of the testing, or?
It's an increase of about four thousand dollars, and one of the, it's going from twelve thousand to fifteen thousand, eight seventy-five.
Pardon me, I'm resuming the wrong.
We are adding a testing well. That's part of it, and I presume there's also some increases in the cost. We just got the new contract the other day.
What's causing us to need a new well?
We have a site where the testing has demonstrated that the PFAS levels are exceedingly high over the allowable limit for drinking water, and it's affecting a house.
But we know that, right? So why would we need another well?
We're required to do testing on the water. It's, it's actually not another well. It's a, it's testing on the water for the house itself with the filtration system that we've added to it.
Right, so I, I believe we need to make sure the filtration system is operational and.
So when you say you were adding a well, you just mean?
Sorry, we're adding a test, we're adding a test.
Test location, yeah.
Not actually putting.
Not, not an actual well. Sorry for that. Thank you for the clarification.
I'm gonna skip over the next one because that looks like a larger conversation. So it looks like our estimation for the health insurance funds for employees was at nine hundred sixty-three thousand approximately, but it came in a little lower for actual costs, about seven, two thousand dollars lower, so that line item is decreasing to eight hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred ten dollars. Is that correct?
And that's just that we got the actual number rather than the budget number. We were told to expect a 20% increase. We budgeted, I think, for a 12% increase, and it turns out there was a 7% decrease that nobody would have anticipated, so it's actually good news for the budget.
Can't complain about that at all.
That's a, that's a big number. That will help a lot. I'm glad we got those actual figures.
Yeah, it's one, the one benefit to having the budget process go later into the year.
Right. Okay, so the next two are also kind of larger conversations. So the last one on here is a summer intern that we are reducing for FY24, from six thousand dollar line item down to a three thousand dollar line item. Does that mean we will be eliminating an intern position? Is that?
So this came up in a discussion. I just put it on here so you would have the hypothetical. The internship program costs six thousand dollars a summer per intern. This proposal of reducing it to three thousand would end out the current calendar year's program, and then we would presumably not fund the program in the FY25 budget. You will be going into summer FY24 without having half of the budget required, so you would not be running an internship program next summer.
And what, what department was this intern supporting?
In the past, the intern has been in the planning department, but in recent practice, the intern, we've had multiple interns serving in the communications and IT department, and they will be giving presentations to you at the August 15th Town Council meeting about their internship experiences.
I'm just, I, I guess I'm hesitating on this line item. We get a lot of work done with the interns we hire for what I consider a nominal fee, if you compare it to a regular wage. And I also like the idea of supporting individuals who might take an interest in municipal government in the future. Six thousand dollars seems like a small amount to lose a lot of capacity here. I.
I agree.
How would, do others?
I would like to keep it if we can, yeah. I think, you know, thinking ahead about the workforce, the future workforce, you know, giving people an opportunity to work in municipal government is a, is a good thing, I think.
Right.
And as you said, we do get.
Right, like a couple summers ago, we had two individuals here who had a lot of, a big hand in helping us do mapping and writing design standards for the village. And I know that our IT department has a young woman here who's helping this year. So I, yeah, I just, given the amount of work we're doing, the staff capacity we have, I think this, we should, like I said, retain this if possible. Okay, Nate, just with the three things that are left on here, there was an HR reserve fund addition, then a conversation around our senior property tax assistance program, and then FY25 CIP set aside. What, do you want to talk about the HR thing now?
Just briefly, we're still developing this, John and I, but in his work in the payroll system, John's identified some questions around payment of overtime, and he wants to explore that and be able to have some way to cover any places where we might need to make some corrections in overtime calculations. So I, I'm still working on that, and I'm gonna, John and I are gonna try to develop that with more clarity this week.
Okay.
So.
I just want, I wish we had a firmer number because we, I know, because we'd like to try to wrap this up tonight.
Probably have something for you this week.
Okay.
But it's categorized similarly to the unfunded liability that you have budgeted for, for sick time payouts in recent budgets. It's a comparable type of budget item.
In all likelihood, is this an overestimation or?
Yeah, can't say for sure, but I think it's, it's on the high end.
Okay, yeah, I just, I don't want to come back to it again and have to go up more.
Understood.
That would be, yeah, okay, well, since we don't have firm numbers on that.
I didn't plug a number in there yet, but as soon as we have one, I'll share it with you.
Okay. Why don't we get into a conversation about the FY25 set aside for CIP? I think we all have some opinions on that. I'm just trying to find, we have, what is our most recent version of the CIP summary sheet? I have, I don't know.
I can share one with you.
Okay, that would be helpful because I feel like the one I have is not the most accurate.
I'll bring it up on the screen.
Was it in the document you sent out?
It was, yes. You received a revised copy of the Excel spreadsheet that we use on staff to develop the department level budgets.
Turn that up.
So again, I would urge a little bit of caution about using the summary worksheet, the comparisons to FY23 versus 24, but I'll bring up the CIP funding spreadsheet. And this was a conversation that, I'd like to ask for guidance from the council. Hold on, hang on just a second. Council, in the FY25 budget, budget projections that you were using for your deliberations on the budget that went into the ballot, there was a cost estimate for a new public safety apparatus, and the purchase price of that apparatus was estimated at that time at nine hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. The question that I've, I'm presenting, and that subsequently resulted in a total CIP budget projection in FY25 of two million, thirty-one thousand dollars. My question for you, and that was the rationale, sorry, just to finish the point out, that was the rationale for adding three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, I think was the rationale, for adding three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of capital reserve funding from this year's budget to be used in next year's budget to offset some of that cost, if I understand correctly. My question to you is, if you were to, instead of buying that vehicle outright, consider a lease purchase agreement where the payment would be, let's say, approximately a hundred thousand dollars a year for 10 or 12 years. We'd have to figure out the terms of the lease. That reduces your CIP request line from two million dollars to one million, two hundred and one thousand dollars, and that's less than your CIP budget for the current year. So unless there's some other mitigating factors that I'm like, ask you to discuss in your decision-making process, would, would it, does it make sense to borrow or put money aside this year to offset a budget for next year that's lower than your current year's CIP budget? And if I'm misunderstanding this, I apologize. Please let me know.
From what I recall, we, we had, we didn't have firm figures because it's FY25, but we had, we did have a conversation around leasing that vehicle rather than buying it outright, and I think we all had come to an agreement that that was the more prudent decision, rather than spending almost a million dollars on one vehicle in one year and spreading that cost out for future, over future years makes a lot of sense, especially given the life of that vehicle. But I think, I think the other reason we were planning to set aside at least some funds in the reserve was just to be prudent with, with any potential cost increases that we can foresee, and I think we've done similar things in years past. Is that, is that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I, I see, I see your point that our CIP next year is likely less than it is this year. Just one question about the numbers you were just showing a minute ago. For FY24, those include our, the edits that we've made on this, the sheet you.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I thought I did. I just wanted to make sure.
Can I just ask a point of clarification?
Sure.
I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right thing here.
Okay.
Having not been involved in those previous budget conversations, and so in your spreadsheet, Nate, you're talking about line 36, fire and public safety?
Yeah, E36, correct.
Yeah, E36, right, okay, good. And, and, and just, what is the vehicle that?
This is a tanker that is also an engine, so it's a high-capacity, water-capacity vehicle that can also be used. It has a nozzle, basically. It can be used to fight fires.
Okay.
Right, and we were, I think, retiring one, so we'd end up.
Two vehicles.
Yeah, at least, okay, two vehicles. We were retiring some vehicles, so we have less vehicles to maintain, and this vehicle would do, basically serve the function of two existing vehicles, this one vehicle.
Yeah, I kind of remember those conversations before. Yeah, okay.
So I, and again, so I see your point. Three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars is a lot of money. Potentially, we would reduce the tax burden for this year. I certainly am in favor of decreasing that number, but I would like to hear other's thoughts about whether we are interested in considering taking all of it away and putting that into our operating costs, or putting it towards our operating costs, or whether we should maintain at least some of it. I'm, I'm kind of on the fence personally.
Why don't we take whatever, whatever the vehicle is expected its useful life, take a fraction of that, take like one-tenth of its, if they figure on keeping it for 10 years and put, and put that away. I mean, it's a million dollars, it'll be a hundred thousand.
Yeah, and that would approximately equal the payment that Nate was just estimating for next year also. That's not a bad idea, Marty. What are, what are the others?
Well, I guess then if you did that, then you would further reduce the capital budget for 2025 by a hundred thousand dollars, which would make it that much more or less than this year's. So I'm, I'm just not sure of the logic of weighting that expense on this year rather than next year, if you see what I'm saying.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
We're in a sort of a critical situation. As far as, you know, this idea of a set aside, and I don't, I don't know, this is the exact place to discuss this, but I've mentioned, well, I don't know if I've mentioned it or not, but in this forum, but I think some sort of asset management program ought to be our goal so that we're not having these discussions about deferring maintenance on things every year. Rather, you know, this, there is this approach now of inventorying all your assets, finding out which ones are the most critical, what's the cost of replacement, and, and coming up with, with a formula of how much money you should set aside for maintenance of your facilities so that you're not running into this problem of deferring maintenance. If we, you know, if, I would say if we set aside any money, it's not a discussion we can come, I'd like to discuss it at the, at the retreat, but if we set aside any money for this capital improvement, I think for this reserve, federal fund reserve, I think that should be part of our priority is trying to fund a system like that for, you know, what's called asset management.
So you're, you're proposing that it's not so much just a reserve account but a maintenance, a maintenance account that we'd be putting money into as part of CIP yearly?
Repair and/or replacement, I guess, or, or just that, you know, that, that be, you know, knowing, you know, having, coming up with a plan for knowing what we should be setting aside is priority. And like I say, I don't know if it's, if this is an appropriate use of those terms, of those funds or not, but if we're not going to do something like that, actually have some sort of systematic way of figuring out how we're going to replace things, I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, cutting all of it basically from this year's budget.
Well, I do, I, I believe the intent of the CIP is, is sort of similar to what you're talking about, where it's planned, it's planned costs associated with major replacements of infrastructure and also, you know, vehicles and things, but I don't, I don't, I don't know for sure if, if, it doesn't include maintenance, typical annual maintenance costs. Yeah, I don't believe it does, yeah. So, I mean, that's a good point, Matthew.
Yeah, thank you.
Dan, go ahead.
Yeah, just a sort of follow-up on what Matthew said. I mean, I think that we have to separate, or we need to define what is a capital expense. I think that's the important thing, and I think we need, you know, CIP needs to focus on those capital improvements. We have the study that we did a couple of years ago now on all of the town's facilities and have a large laundry list of issues that were identified. Some of them were life safety, some were code, some of them were just, you know, maintenance that had been deferred. And Mo has been working away on that list of things to do, and some of the things from that are in this budget. So I, I just think it's important that we sort of define what we want capital to be. I'm not sure that we want it to be the place where we put money for maintenance of things. It's also important, remember that a big chunk of the cap, of the CIP budget goes to debt service, and our debt service is going to continue to drop off here over the next few years, which is one of the reasons why you're seeing the number go down. I think it's the most important thing that goes along with what Matthew is saying is making sure that we've identified all of the capital improvements that we need to make in the future, and then scheduling them out so that they don't all come at once. So I think it would be a good time to review, you know, the next five years or so of the CIP, and, and just get a check-in from the department heads. Is everything on that list still the most important things for those years? I am hesitant to delete, I wouldn't support deleting all the money from going into capital expense. There's always unforeseen things. We have started some contingency funds. Those aren't really there for capital improvement. there for capital improvement type things though. Um, hopefully the bond, you know, for the septic system and the panel project here will help alleviate, you know, one of the, um, I guess the most likely to fail things that we have to deal with. But, um, I think, you know, Marty's idea of putting enough money in there to cover the vehicle expense is a, a good one. I'd support that.
Yeah, and just a note about the, the panel septic work and the work for, um, shifting some and, um, rehabbing some of the buildings on the panel campus, that is currently part of the bond. If that, if that bond work, um, is not, is not bonded, it would, it would then reappear in this CIP and that's quite a, quite a large bill. It's about eight hundred, we're budgeting eight hundred fifty thousand dollars for that, so. Um, that was one way we decreased the CIP this year is by proposing a bond to spread the, the life of those payments out over what would be five years instead of one year.
And the bond did pass.
It did pass.
So I'm hoping it will too.
Exactly.
Take the budget to the voters again.
Yeah.
So we don't have to vote on that again? They don't have to.
Well, they do, they do, because we decided at the beginning of this that since LD one failed, that we were going to revisit all the.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Yeah. Um, and what were your thoughts on?
Yeah, I was going to agree that I don't, I don't think it's necessary to, um, back out all of the CIP reserve money. I just, as much as need, as needed to, uh, you know, my, my target has been around, you know, moving around five hundred thousand dollars from the budget, reducing the budget by five hundred thousand dollars. So, I mean, I'm, that's not absolute, but, um, I'm, that's sort of the ballpark for me. And so whatever we need from the reserve to get to that point, I think is, um, makes a lot of sense. And I, um, I, I don't recall, I, I do recall the facilities, um, you know, review, the very thorough study we did of all our facilities a couple of years ago. What I'm not clear about is whether or not a similar study has been done for all town vehicles and especially like, public safety or public works or, um, you know, the, the ones that are more likely to be higher cost. And, and, um, have we, do we know what those are?
The town staff or department heads do that, uh, surveying year to year, but it's not all on a document the same way that, you know, the facility study identified all of the urgent needs.
I, I, I would not support taking the time to do that right now. I, I think that could have been done during the earlier budget process and if it wasn't, I think it could wait till next year, but, or it's, you know, it's something we can discuss in our workshop, yeah.
It is, it is something that we had planned to do last August and the plans didn't work out for that.
Yeah, it is, I mean, since it came up again, the LD question, it is, it is important to remember that in the previous year, um, in the FY twenty-three, um, warrant article that went out, we asked, um, voters to increase the LD number by just over a million dollars. And that question passed in the year before. Um, I think, you know, there have been a lot of changes, there's been significant increases in costs and things like that. But, um, I think, uh, a smaller LD one number, um, is something hopefully we can convince voters is, is worth passing. If we don't eliminate it completely.
Yeah.
Yep.
There has been support, I guess what I'm saying is there has been support in the past for voting for that and I think some of that just comes from, um, the fact that it's such a complex, calculation to explain to people.
Yeah. Um, so it sounds like, um, at least most of us, and I, I think I'm also in favor of at least maintaining, um, some part of the reserve funding for CIP, uh, for FY twenty-four. And it sounds like we're all in agreement that some, that around a hundred thousand dollars would be sufficient for this year.
I'd support that.
Is that Matthew?
Yeah.
And Matthew's not in support of that.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of, you're just setting aside a hundred thousand dollars, you know, for this reserve without a, a clear idea. I, I haven't received a clear idea of what it's for. Um, I mean, if, if we have contingency funds, um, you know, and they need more funding, I'm, I'm in favor of, of doing that, just saying, you know, we're going to set aside a hundred thousand this year for some undetermined reason, you know, next year when we actually have less capital expense. I don't, yeah, I don't.
Well, I think to Dan's point, it is sort of is, it is, serves as a contingency fund for the capital improvement projects that we are funding this year, so.
Also, a little history might be valuable too. That six years ago and, and further back in time than that, councils used the capital, uh, payments into the capital improvement fund to basically hold down property taxes. And about six years ago, there was a huge hole in the CIP, um, budget. Uh, at the same time, we were in need of replacing the ladder truck, which was a million dollars. And there was other equipment that had been let go that needed to be replaced. And so the council at that time put forth to voters, uh, bond to basically jumpstart funding the capital improvement plan. Um, that's since been paid off. And as a result now, there are no, if you look out into the future, there are no holes in the capital improvement plan where there are not enough funds, or where there's a, a real shortage of funds for future projects. So it's not just an arbitrary, um, i- installment. It's critically important to maintaining, you know, some sort of balance on future tax increases to make sure that the capital improvement plan is adequately funded, because those are such high-ticket items, so.
Do you have any idea how much was set aside in the last, like, annual leases, just a set aside for the capital improvement reserve?
Last year, I don't remember now.
I think it was, I, I don't, I believe last year it was somewhere around four hundred thousand dollars, but I, I don't have that in front of me, but I, I could be wrong.
Yeah, I would have to look.
Yeah.
But, yeah, presumably there were specific projects we were looking at.
There always are specific projects, but you, you figure that, you know, we're pricing things that are going to be bought in twenty thirty-two with today's prices. We've seen the price of, of public safety equipment double in the last few years. So it's, it's, again, I just, I, I don't think it's really an arbitrary thing. The cost of things is going to go up and trying to project prices of materials and goods five years out is always a tricky, um, exercise. So I think, um, putting some money in there, um, it's not a, um, it's not like it's going to be wasted or it's going to be misspent. The worst-case scenario is it will allow us to have to put less in later.
Yeah, and I, I guess I'm not suggesting that it would be misspent. Um, there's no need to, you know, argue that point. Uh, that's not my concern, my concern is, we have, you know, um, this year's problems this year. Um, you know, true, we don't know what next year's problems are going to be, but we do know that, um, it looks like there's going to be less of a capital budget next year and, and if we need to increase it to set, set aside money next year, I mean, and for the twenty twenty-five budget, we can do that in the next budget process, so.
Nate, do your FY twenty-five numbers in the summary include things we moved? We moved, we pushed out to FY twenty-five last week?
Uh, no.
No, they don't, so.
I don't.
We moved quite a few things out into FY twenty-five, especially from buildings and grounds last week. Um, we've also added a lease payment for vehicles, um, since we decided to lease two vehicles instead of buying them outright. So those, I, I think that's kind of making Dan's point in that we don't, these, these are all estimates, um, for future years and so having this reserve account just gives us a buffer for planning next year. We don't start ourselves in a, in a hole next year.
Mm-hmm. Well, to, to that point, I guess I would, I would offer that, um, you know, rather than set aside money to pay for those future payments on vehicle leases, that, um, we could simply, you know, buy them this year, reduce the, you know, you know, buy them, you know, out of this three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars outright, rather than, you know, transfer a hundred thousand dollars to next year. And then we'd be, in fact, reducing capital budget for next year and the year after by buying the vehicles rather than leasing them and saving the, you know, the, uh, interest.
I hear your point on the vehicles, um, but there were other things we moved that we've just decided to defer from this year and I, I don't have them all in front of me because we, I have like, about ten different papers in front of me right now. But, um, there, there were some, some things from the library, there are several items from buildings and grounds that we're just pushing out and, I just think.
So if we spent that hundred thousand that way, rather than deferred till next year, I'd be fine with that also.
Well, I think the other piece of it is that, that we're not making as big a, um, payment into the capital improvement funds so that we can use that money to not have to cut other expenses from other departments. So there's a balance there, I guess, that we have to.
Right.
We have to hit. Um, I don't think the suggestions you made are, are bad ones and maybe in, when we get to the bottom, we could do something like that. But at this point in time, I think we got four votes for, we should.
Yeah, I think we should stick with one hundred thousand. I think Dan makes a good point, if we get to the end of this evening and we aren't comfortable with the number where we end up, um, we can, we can revisit some of these topics.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's kind of a rob, round-robin kind of approach.
It's, I call it the Etch-A-Sketch.
Hundred and nine thousand dollars worth of.
A hundred and nine thousand dollars worth of things we've deferred to FY twenty-five.
Both, uh, sorry, buildings and grounds, uh, the vehicle purchases from the, and the change to the SRO vehicle contract for next year, and also the meeting rooms, chairs and tables for the library and the Cradle Point router. And that's just the changes that you made last week. There were some other items removed from the CIP budget, uh, subsequently, yeah.
Yeah, during the regular budget process. Okay. Um, well, let's move on to the other difficult conversation is the, um, senior property tax, it's our municipal senior property tax assistance program, program where seniors, I believe we've lowered it to sixty-five and up can apply for, uh, property tax. Um, it's basically kind of serves as like a credit towards their property track taxes of up to five hundred dollars based on their, um, income qualifications. Um, we're considering cutting it as, as a, a program this year mostly because, um, the state has expanded two of their programs that kind of serve a similar purpose. They lower the tax burden for seniors. Um, one, I forget the names of the programs. One is, um, a property tax deferment program, which allows you to defer your taxes until you sell your homes, I believe, I believe. Um, and then the other one is, um, increasing the, um, the ta- the credit on your taxes. What is that, what is that program?
The homestead exemption?
No, it's on their income taxes. They, it's a credit for low incomes, it's, it's, it's income-based, low-income seniors, they can apply.
Property tax fairness credit.
Property tax fairness.
Gives eligible main taxpayers a portion of their property tax or rent paid each year as a credit on their state income tax return. If the credit exceeds the amount of the individual income tax due for the tax share, the excess amount of the credit will be refunded to them. And the increase, the maximum credit was increased from fifteen hundred to two thousand.
Two thousand, right. So that, that five hundred dollars right there would accomplish what our local program, um, is currently doing because, um, individuals applying for that credit would get it regardless of what their income taxes are because it would come back to them above and beyond what they pay out. Um, so this is, I think it was a worthy program that got a lot of conversation. This was, this was approved before I was on council, but I know it went out as a warrant, a separate warrant, um, article originally. I don't remember how much it passed by at the time.
It did pass though.
It did pass. And it's been, eh, I think, two years now that, um, we've had this as a, as a benefit that seniors can apply for. Um, last year, I believe it costs around eighteen thousand dollars to administer. We were, um, estimating somewhere around nineteen thousand dollars this year. But given our current, um, financial situation and the tax bills that all residents, regardless of their age, are currently receiving, do we want to eliminate this program, given that state has also expanded its, um, uh, benefits for individuals of the same age?
Can I have a point, I have a point of clarification. It, it costs eighteen thousand dollars to administer the program last year?
So I believe between the credits themselves and then also the cost.
Oh, okay, the staffing cost, that was the question I had, was how much staff time it required. To, if, I mean, we have twelve-five in the budget for this year for it, so another, you know, six or seven thousand dollars, you think, uh, would, would, for staff time, would, would be the full program cost?
It's hard to quantify, but I would say it was probably more like four thousand or so in staff time and printing costs and processing, uh, all the applications. There were quite a number of applications that came in.
There were.
And then you mentioned that, that, that program is means-tested, the town program?
Our local program is mean, means-tested, as is the, um, property tax fairness program.
The state's new program.
I think both of their state's programs are means-tested, I believe, yeah. Yeah. The means-testing on ours was, um, I don't have the exact, you know, calculations in front of me, but it was, it was based on the, um, median, um,
Household income. Correct.
Income for the, the county, I believe.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Is it, can I just ask a question about that because there, oh, there's other eligibility criteria. And on the, on the website, it doesn't say that there's an income criteria or limit. Uh, it's sixty-five, you have to have a homestead, uh, in Gray. You have to have lived in Gray for at least ten years, immediately preceding the date of application, own no other property and meet other eligibility criteria. I do recall that we had means-tested it, but I didn't know if that had changed.
Yeah, there's definitely a means-test in there, um.
That was added after the first year.
Yeah.
Was it?
Yeah.
No, we, it was always means-tested.
It was changed though, after the first year.
Oh, oh, okay.
So like, you have to make less than the median household income or something like that?
Up to, I mean, it's up to, and then I, it's also prorated based on what, how close you are to that mean.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, I mean, it's just, it's a hard, it's a hard conversation. Once you give a benefit to people, it's hard, it's hard to take it away, to take it away, but.
I don't think you are, really, I mean, you're substituting.
You're substituting, the state program didn't, it really did, um, kind of duplicate what we're doing here, so.
And the state's program actually is two-part, so there's another part that makes it potentially more generous for people.
And, and is the state program state-administered?
Yes.
So that the town doesn't have the administration costs?
Yeah, I mean, um, the, the state did implement a stabilization program last year that they now have repealed. That was being administered by municipal staff, that was actually quite costly. Um, but they've since repealed that, so we don't, no longer have that cost either.
So, in general, I am in favor of, you know, means-tested property tax relief. I don't particularly think that, you know, the age or number of years, um, somebody's lived in a municipality is particularly relevant.
Yeah.
I mean, I understand, you know, we want to protect our long-term residents, but still, um, if, you know, if we were to have a program to help people in, you know, in need with their property taxes, um, I, you know, I, I, I would be in favor of us working on crafting such a program. But, you know, given the current dynamics of the new state law being passed and, um, you know, I, I'm, I would be okay with cutting this.
I, I would have to agree. I, um, I also take some issue with that people struggle regardless of their age. If they're poor, they're poor, um, and property taxes are difficult when you're poor.
Or, or they're in a crisis, you know, it's not necessarily a lifelong thing.
Yeah, so I, I, I see what you're saying and I think, I do think the state's expansion of the programs that support seniors more than cover what we were trying to do here in our municipality. And given the state of our current tax situation here locally, I think it is certainly worthy to cut at this time. Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, I, I think it's important too to just remind people that in the six years I've been on the council anyways, we've never taken anybody's house away from them. And in fact, I think in the instances where people have struggled to pay their taxes, most of them wouldn't have qualified for this program anyways. But in each of those cases, we were able to work something out with the person in order to do it. But it's never the council's goal to take somebody's home away from them.
Certainly not.
But I, I just think that in this particular case, since the state has stepped up and created this program, which is actually potentially has more value than our own. And, and given the fact that, you know, you are, just by the nature of the way taxes work, you know, having people of less means pay into a process that they're not eligible for, that actually will help someone perhaps of even somewhat better means themselves. I just think that it's, it's an easy change to make at this point in time.
So you're in favor of approving this as a program at the nineteen thousand dollar?
Yep.
Okay, that's three of us. I don't know if anyone wants to say anything. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I am in favor of changing it, or, I mean, of eliminating this from the budget as well. My one concern is that there's bound to be some confusion about it and I just want to make sure that our, once the budget passes, that we make the changes to our website to make it really clear to folks where they need to go to apply for the state assistance and, and that this program is no longer available.
Right, I think Lauren was able to email people that have received this. So last year she emailed folks that had received it the year prior to notify them of the application because we had changed the application date. Perhaps we could do something similar, but just let them know where they could seek a similar type of support for their taxes.
Yeah, I think the communication piece is important. There's no reason why we couldn't put links to the new program on our website.
Yes.
So that if people go there looking for it, they at least have easy access to the state's information.
Yeah, but I, I also very much favor contacting the individuals we know are in the program specifically.
Yes.
And telling them what the change is.
Right, I mean, I, I think that took Lauren some time, but it, she, I believe at the time she said it wasn't too burdensome to do. Marty, did you?
I agree with everybody else.
You agree with everyone else? Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, so one other thing on CIP that we were going to revisit, and I just was looking at my notes. The land, we currently have fifty thousand dollars in CIP for land acquisition. So I guess I'd like to just open that up as a conversation again. I know we are potentially having a separate warrant where we're going to designate one-twelfth of the general fund towards establishing a larger land acquisition fund. So the question is, do we also need this fifty thousand dollar in C, dollars in CIP if we're going to move forward with that? That question. Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, I, I would, I think for purposes of just making it easy to communicate people to people, I would keep the borrowing from the one-twelfth and I would eliminate this fifty thousand dollar.
That's, that's how I was leaning also.
I, I think that the, it's important that people know that they, you know, we, they still have to vote in order to approve the expenditure of that money. So it's, it's, you know, we're not eliminating that step by doing it this way. But with the capital improvements on Main Street and on Yarmouth Road, you know, we don't know what possible expenses there will be that way from the standpoint of having to acquire property. And that's really the reason for wanting to have a fund of some depth to, to, to be able to meet any of those needs if they come up.
Right, and so the, remind me how the one-twelfth works, I, I.
So we're required to set aside three-tweltths of our operating expenses for the year as basically a savings account in our general fund. Of that three-tweltths, we're allowed to borrow up to one-twelfth to decrease taxes or do something else important like create a land acquisition fund. But then we need to repay that one-twelfth back within five years. But there's no accruing interest during that time.
Right, okay, that, yeah. Yeah, I, I, I would just say that I, I think that makes sense. I, 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 at some point, I would like to revisit the requirement that we have a separate vote, it's like a special town meeting vote from voters, because it's, it's actually, it just completely hobbles the land acquisition process. You know, working with landowners can be a sensitive process and, and, and there are times when you need to move quickly and I'm just not sure that it's realistic to have that requirement.
I don't believe we would have to have a special, once this is approved as a, Nate, you have your hand up, perhaps you were going to answer this.
In twenty nineteen, the first time this program was proposed, there was a warrant article question that asked both for creating this fund and also for appropriating the funds to start it. Town attorney has suggested that, that if you want to fund this program this year, that you do the same thing and have a separate warrant article with appropriation of that money into that fund. The creation of that fund gave the council the authority to make those appropriations for a real estate purchase, but you would have to have a public hearing about the real estate proposal prior to dispersing the funds. So you don't have to do a vote, a ballot, you just have to have a public hearing, not a town meeting or a ballot.
Thank you for correcting me.
Yeah, thanks.
But, but you would need another warrant article for that.
Do you, just from your perspective, Nate, do you see a need for having two separate land acquisition line items? One being the one-twelfth portion and then this other separate fifty thousand dollars in the CIP?
Understanding the town's strategic goals around the Main Street project and the road construction project, and knowing that the town's going to have a, an expense for acquiring rights of way to make that project happen, I think your one-twelfth budget will go substantially toward those goals. And, and knowing that there are other real estate transactions that have been proposed to advance other goals of the comprehensive plan, I would say that, that the funding both line items, funding both budgets is not insignificant and it's not redundant. It's, gives you more capacity to accomplish the goals that you've identified going back to twenty nineteen when this fund was instantiated. So I would say, given the choice, it would probably be better to have the money if you can afford it.
Do we need a, so the way we've been setting aside money for land acquisition through the CIP in that, in the fund we established in twenty nineteen, do we have to have a hearing for any rights of way we acquire or anything for, for that fund? Or are you saying we just need to have the hearing for this separate?
No, it would be just for that separate fund.
The separate one?
The way that it's, yeah, the way that it's written.
So this land acquisition money in the CIP is more flexible than the one we would be potentially creating?
The way that, yeah, the way that it's written. I can revisit that just to be sure.
Matthew, Marty, do you have thoughts on the fifty thousand in CIP?
Uh, we should cut it.
I want to keep it in.
Yeah, Anne, did you?
I'd like to keep it in if we can, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think, given that it's more flexible, as Nate was just outlining, I, I, I guess I'm in favor of keeping it in also then.
Is there, what's the count?
Uh.
It's three-two?
You wanted to take it out, yeah, three-two. Three-two for keeping it.
So that's for keeping it.
Okay, so we've gone through all the sec, further discussion items Nate has raised on the CIP. I think the CIP is in pretty good shape. If there's something else that comes up, we can always come back. Um, oh, one, actually, one other thing. I don't know if you all had a chance to read John's memo that he handed out on Thursday about the Time Clock Plus software?
Yes.
It looks like the cost of that equipment has gone down from thirty thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars to twenty-six thousand three hundred seventy-two. And that the current software we have, the finger check software, does not have a contract that would require us to continue to pay that fifty-four hundred dollars software cost. So we can eliminate that line item from the operating budget if we do decide to move forward with the purchase of the Time Clock project software. The Time Clock Plus does have a software cost of its own of thirty-seven hundred dollars instead of the fifty-four hundred we're currently paying. So we should just decide on that also. That's the, I think, the one remaining CIP item. Given John's memo and the conversations we've had with him around the efficiencies this would create since this soft, the Time Clock Plus technology and the software that supports it is the only one that speaks to our Trio software, which we use in all things government here, I think it makes a lot of sense to move forward with, with purchasing this and it would allow us to better track how we pay. I think there was better reporting capability for payroll and also people's time off requests and it's, it's, folks can go in and do things on their own rather than having to rely on paper systems and department head requests that have, there's less people involved from what I understand. Is that correct, Nate?
Yeah, it will, it will streamline and simplify that process. It still has many steps, but this will create a common frame of reference for John at least and hopefully for everybody else to simplify as much as we can our very complex payroll system.
Right, and then the yearly cost for the software is less than we're currently paying. How do folks feel about moving forward with this purchase?
Buy it.
Yeah, buy it.
Yeah, I'm not sold, but it's four-one, so go ahead.
All right, so that changes our numbers for CIP a little bit. And also our operating costs will go down by about two thousand.
I think the reason I'm not sold, and the timing of this is, is, is not very good, but I think that prior to this, I would have suggested we look into contracting out payroll.
I think you did look into that, Nate, and you didn't have, there was no appetite for it out there, from what I understand.
Yes. Things change. But yes, it's four-one, so we should move on.
Okay. Um, okay, so last week, we did inquire about things we were wondering about cutting from public works and public safety and community development. So I basically would just like to start at the beginning, but skipping over those doc, departments I just named. And just kind of go person by person here to see what else we might want to flag. I know several of us did send around some spreadsheets with their thoughts, but you can just refer to those as individuals are talking. So I would like to start with just administration.
So what are we looking at, the master presentation or what document should we be, or the one you sent around?
Uh, yeah. Basically, we all should have gone through the expense packets we have for operating costs and then just kind of flagged things we thought we had questions about or potentially would like to see changes made for cuts. I had sort of, Dan put together his own spreadsheet to kind of summarize his thoughts, as did Anne and myself. I don't know how you and Marty want to present yours, but I was just looking to go department by department and then just hear from each of us, we can address line items as we go. I can go first if you're, sure, okay. So in administration. Well, I, I'll come back to that, never mind. I had flagged some telephone costs and I know, Nate, you said you don't have a lot of insight into our billing for phone accounts, but for instance, admin, the telephone price went on line O-two dash three ninety for telephone, went from six thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars to ten thousand four hundred sixty-two. So that, I just, it's almost a four thousand dollar increase there. I'm just, it seems like a lot for a telephone bill to go up that much for one department. So I, is there, and I, I'd have flagged phone accounts on several departments here, admin, communications, information technology, recreation, public safety and buildings and ground. I'm just wondering, like, I know our finance director is new, does, would she be able to come up with how we're estimating those costs?
We can, we can try to look into it, but I'm not confident that we're going to be able to give you any meaningful information between now and when you want to have a draft, sort of draft warrant articles.
Okay.
Well, I, I, my understanding is that these figures were produced based on the town's actual costs and there was a correction in the way these were calculated. But I don't, I don't know what the rationale was for that, other than just looking at the bills and adjusting the budget based on what the current bills were.
Okay.
So did I mean, like, in, in prior years, they would have budgeted a certain amount and then gotten the overage from some other place?
Some other area, yes.
And so now we're just trying to get closer to the actual cost?
That's right.
Rather than, rather than some change that is increasing the actual expenditure?
That's right. And I, I can't tell you when that, when those figures stopped being representative of the actual cost. I can just tell you that we, those adjustments were recommended for last year's budget across the board from the administrative office.
Okay, well, I will skip over my telephone comments then, but if we, if we could just get a, just at least a better understanding.
We can try.
If not, we'll have to live with what we have here, but. Also in admin, at O-two one fifty for personnel development, we have a total line item for that of eight thousand dollars, but under that, there's a staff training line item for three thousand dollars. Just wondering if there's any flexibility in that, especially given we have other staff training in other departments like HR allocated. And I wasn't sure what that was.
So that, last year's budget included the tuition for a class that I took. And the remaining budget would have been about five thousand. So this is an increase in the otherwise what the budget would have been for staff training in admin. And my, let me pull that up so I can try to give you some insight.
I know that there's a contract line for that same amount.
Right, that's under the.
This was in addition to that.
That's under the, yes, that's right. The training includes training for the administrative staff, so that's the clerk's office, finance director, for me, for my certifications in professional development, and also includes a five hundred dollar stipend for the intern to attend the MT-CMA conference. That's part of the requirement for the program from the Margaret Chase Smith Center is that we pay for the intern to attend the conference and, which happens to be happening this week, Monday through, excuse me, Wednesday through Friday. So that's where the eight thousand dollars comes from.
Okay.
I provided some material for you back during the budget process about my cost projections. And then the staff training comes from.
Yeah, and I mean, I see those other line items, the USN internship and all that. I just was, the one that was labeled staff training, I couldn't recall exactly what that was.
Got it.
I, I see that encompasses several things. Um, what else did I have for admin? That was all I had for admin. Did anyone else have things for admin they would like to?
Uh, how about postage, let's see, line item zero four dash two sixty, postage meter rental, four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. I mean, that's not a big number, but it's not a lot of money.
In administration?
Yes, under O-one dot dash ten administration.
We posted rate, that's rental, does that also, that's just the rental of that?
Yeah, it's rental and maintenance of the machine and it doesn't, let me make sure. Why am I not finding that? That's on the administrative budget?
Oh, four, yeah, it's on page.
Oh, four.
Four dash two sixty.
Okay, got it. Yeah, no, that's the rental for the equipment. And then we have another piece of equipment that we use. that we use to supplement that for the, you know, substantial amount of mailings that go through the clerk's office.
And I have community development advertising, the budget went from a thousand to seven thousand. I'm guessing that was a typo.
Uh, all of those changes to that represent the increase in cost for using the Portland Press Herald versus the Lakes Region Rieger.
That's right.
And also, the increase in the volume of business that we're conducting across the, across several departments, planning board, uh, planning department, code office and the zoning board of appeals, but also for the town administrative office.
Code...
Sorry, I was, so, so, community development and code and like, I wasn't, I'm not quite there yet. I'm just, I'm just talking about strictly admin.
Yeah, administration.
Administration, yeah, so...
Oh, okay. Jump on the...
Yeah, but that was, we did talk about that last time, that seven thousand dollar line item. So, yeah, we can't lower that if we want to continue with the Press Herald.
Right.
Did anyone else have any admin line items that they wanted to flag? No? Okay.
Does the, I was just going to check that the proposed for contracted services for audit covers what we are expecting.
Unfortunately, I can't tell you because the auditor who I contacted prior to your council meeting, who was available to do the audit, has since had to retract. So, I'm trying to find other auditors who might be able to help us.
Keel?
Yeah.
We just had the one bid, right?
Keel had, we only had one bid and he backed, he had to, I was told by his firm that they had to back out of the proposal. So, I'm looking for other options, working with the finance director and the town clerk.
Okay. You mean, it looks like we've given ourselves quite a buffer over last year's budget, so...
I wouldn't reduce it.
No, I certainly don't think we should reduce it, but hopefully it will be enough. Okay, so, I'm going to move on to HR, admin dash HR.
Uh, okay.
Unless you, did you have something?
No, that's all right, go ahead.
Okay. I certainly recognize oh-two dash one fifty personnel development under that seventeen thousand dollar line item. Fifteen thousand dollars is for the all-staff training program, which I understand is new that we are going to be rolling out across the organization, the whole government. But is there any flexibility? It's just such a large, is there any flexibility on that number?
Uh, well, you can set the number wherever you want, it's just going to affect the amount of training curriculum that we can provide. I, I know that, as, as I mentioned in the memo or in the conversation the other day, John is creating this program from scratch for Gray and he's working off of guidelines that he has from his Society for Human Resources Management Association. So, there, there, it's, you know, the funding's important, the levels are somewhat arbitrary, but it does cost, it does cost money to put these programs on.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question about that? So, can you just provide us with some examples of what the training might include, just because it hasn't been provided before, I guess?
Yeah, broadly, we are looking at team skills, interdepartmental communication and teamwork, leadership and management training programs, and I can't give you any more specifics than that, other than through our employee surveys and through our just anecdotal review of these issues with department heads, we've identified that there are opportunities and there's interest in developing these skills and it's also tied to some of the productivity goals, but also the leadership and management goals that we're setting for departments and department heads. Some of it would be technology training for, again, interdepartmental or intradepartmental communication that is different from the department level technical skills training that each department does to, you know, maintain their qualifications and professional certifications. But this is, it's not soft skills, it's hard skills, but they're not hard skills in how to assess a property or things like that.
I would, I would like to propose at least a reduction in this, given it's an unknown cost and it's new and we're having to make some difficult decisions elsewhere here. I, I know it's aspirational to be doing this and I, I don't disagree with the intent, but I, I think, I'd like to see what we can do with a little less money this year and then maybe talk about increasing it next year. Dan?
Yeah, I'd like to propose making it ten thousand dollars for this year.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was, that was kind of how I was leaning, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's not a judgment about the value of doing training, but Rome wasn't built in a day.
Right.
I think we're going to have to work our way into it. It's progress.
Marty, do you have your hand up or you just, no? You're good with the cut?
No, I'm against cutting it.
You're against cutting it? Okay. Ann, did you want to weigh in?
Um, I mean, I can live with it either way, honestly. I mean, I think this training is important and I, especially the technology training. I really want to see the staff, you know, improve their skills in, in technology without understanding more about the, the training plan and how that works. I, I, you know, this could be a lot of training to throw at staff in one year and I, I, so, I guess I'm okay to reduce it to ten K.
Yeah, let's, let's keep it at ten K for this year, I think that's where we're at. Did anyone else have anything under HR? Dan?
I had a question about the member dues, account one oh one, oh one fifteen, oh two one oh one, is forty-five forty-one, I believe.
Yep, that's what I have.
And that, just wondering what, what that forty-five hundred will produce?
Okay, that is a membership to the Society for Human Resources Management certification exam from them, main town and city managers association membership at forty dollars, the membership to the main human resources association for forty dollars, and then the time clock, for whatever reason, the time clock annual cost is in under those member dues in this budget.
Oh, okay.
That's three thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Yeah, it's primarily just the software for the time clock we just approved.
That's in the wrong account.
Yeah, it, I wouldn't have put it there.
Yeah, no, it shouldn't be in, in member dues, it needs to go into one of the other accounts.
Yeah, it needs to go somewhere else, okay.
Yep. The only other thing I had was under the one fifty-five account, the professional services miscellaneous, the fourteen four.
That, we already reduced that last time to...
Yeah, nine thousand four hundred.
Yeah, we took five thousand from that last time.
I missed that, thank you.
Yeah.
We took four, five thousand?
Yes.
That's what I thought, yeah, okay.
I mean, of all the cuts I've agreed to so far, that's the one, the one I regret and would retract my support for actually at this point. I mean, I think if we're, you know, if we're going for a budget reduction somewhere between five hundred thousand and eight hundred thousand dollars, I think we're, from looking at the document Nate sent around, I think we're actually on course to get closer to eight hundred thousand than, than the, than the five hundred thousand without, you know, without sending this particular message to staff, I guess.
Well, the message we're sending to staff is that we're giving them ten thousand dollars more than we ever did before for professional development.
Right.
I think Matthew's...
And also sending the message of a seventy thousand dollar cut to the COLA that was in the previous budget, that's also a message we're sending.
Right, but we are honoring wage adjustments that we've made.
Yes.
And we also are adding a generous retirement package for public safety this year and we haven't cut COLA completely. I mean, I, I hear what you're saying and we're retaining some of the money to honor service milestones and birthdays. It's just, it's just we have to make some reductions and I certainly don't like to see them, you know, staff is an important role here and, yeah.
We certainly need, yeah, we certainly need to make reductions. I mean, that's not, that's not a point anyone's making that I've heard. You know, and I, I'm sure I'm alone on this, but, yeah, I, I'm not sure of the value of getting that down to this level of granularity when we've, you know, we've already got, I mean, I think finding that ten thousand dollars for, you know, for dry hydrant maintenance was great. That was a great find because that's not supporting anything. But I think, you know, we've, we've got a human resources director, we want to, you know, we want to encourage staff development. I, I want to, you know, and I want to support that budget and his ability to get done what I, I believe he's been tasked to do.
Yes, I don't, I don't disagree with you, but I think allowing for a ten thousand dollar line item in support of that is, is, it's a program we haven't even developed and let's see what we can get with ten thousand dollars and then perhaps rediscover, revisit it next year once we know what, what the cost actually is. That's, that's kind of where I was landing with that one particularly. I, I believe the, you're, you were talking more about the professional services line item that where we reduced the amount towards the service milestones and the employee appreciation gifts, yes?
Yeah, that was, that was my mistake, sorry.
Well, I, we're, I know Matthew's saying he's kind of changing his vote towards reducing that by five thou, that line item by five thousand dollars. Are, is everyone else still on board with the reduction? I'm, I'm still okay with them.
Yep.
Ann?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, actually, I'm realizing I may have been a little confused with the preceding discussion. I'm okay with, for the reasons you stated, Krista, reducing it a little bit this year, pending, let's see how it goes. There's a lot of change here.
Right.
And, and so, you know, let's start a little smaller and ramp up once we get these systems in place. I realize I, I may have been a little confused about the oh-two one fifty personnel development. When I was promoting the, a ten, a reduction to ten thousand dollars, I, when I sort of was in favor of that, I was speaking specifically about the all-staff training program and not the total amount from seventeen seven fifty to ten thousand, is that what I'm guessing?
Yes, yeah.
I'm the one that's confused now.
Yeah, that's what I was, right, so, that would go down by, that total line item seventeen thousand seven fifty would go down by five thousand.
Okay, that's what I wanted, yep.
Twelve thousand seven.
I just want to make sure I...
Yeah. Okay, does I, it sounds like we're still okay with the reduction of oh-three dash one fifty-five professional services down to nine thousand four hundred, or at least most of us are.
Yeah. I, I, but I have to say, I would agree with Matthew that, that, I mean, just that, that we, I don't know that we need to go through this exercise at this point. We're, we're, we're well over five hundred thousand dollars, I think, and, and budget reductions.
Well, maybe we should check in on what our total number is.
Okay, yeah.
Have you?
So, can I, can I just confirm that the agreement from council was to reduce the set aside for FY twenty-five from three hundred and twenty-five to a hundred thousand?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, let me just plug a couple of things in here. I also want to note that one of the changes that you all suggested in the CIT budget for putting off UPS replacement and the GCTB, that, that item, we looked in the budget and didn't see it, so I'm going to take that one out. That, that was a thirty-eight hundred dollar cost savings projection, but it wasn't in there to begin with, so...
Oh.
That money's not in the budget, so I can't cut it. But with that said, your total, not including the changes that you've proposed this evening other than the FY twenty-five set aside that I didn't already have on the document, you're at eight forty-four, four fifty-nine, but that does not include the HR reserve fund that I mentioned earlier.
But it does include the elimination of the property tax assistance program.
It does, correct, yes. And it keeps the summer intern program intact.
Keeps that, okay. So, your new total was what, eight forty?
You're starting from, the, the basis for your discussion going forward from here is eight forty-four, four fifty, four fifty-nine.
But it potentially will...
Yeah, whatever other changes you've discussed since...
If whatever we do for HR reserve, it might decrease that back down to more like eight hundred thousand, okay.
You, the, the conversation you've had for the last twenty-five minutes, basically, those changes are not committed yet.
I mean, I, I think that's plenty.
Yeah, I think...
Well, it might go, it might go down to eight hundred thousand if we commit money to this HR reserve account.
Didn't, didn't, we didn't agree to that already?
Wait a second, sorry, I actually included that.
No, you did?
I just did, yeah, I'm sorry, I put that in a second ago. So, that's the seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in savings, that is counted, I apologize.
Oh, the personnel development you put in?
Yeah, the personnel development.
Okay, we're all, we're all over the place.
I'm sorry, just that one, just that one.
Okay.
I did put that one in.
And that's included in the eight hundred forty-four thousand dollar figure?
Correct, yeah, that's correct.
That's a lot of...
But, so what I'm saying is this eight hundred forty-four thousand four hundred fifty dollar reduction, which includes the capital improvement project reductions and our operating expenses, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Might, we might, if we create this HR reserve fund, right, we, and say we do it at fifty thousand dollars as Nate is suggesting here, you know, that would lower that number down to seven hundred ninety...
You'd be at seven ninety-four, four fifty.
Why don't we round this eight to eight hundred thousand even?
Well, it needs to be specific to accounts.
Right, we have to go through it.
Yeah, otherwise, you, you don't know where the money is going to come from.
Right.
I, I think it's, you know, I guess I would, I would say it's time to stop and, and, you know.
Well, I, I guess I don't have a, a good sense for what this, say, we ended with seven hundred ninety-four thousand four fifty as a reduction. What does that do as a percentage to our tax, our tax rate increase base, you know, comparatively to last year? What does it do to the potential mill rate? Like, where are we on, how is this going to be communicated as, what kind of percentage increase are we left with over FY twenty-three with that reduction?
I think that's an important question.
Right.
Because that's the part they're going to be voting on.
Right. And I know it's hard to, we're doing math on the spot, nobody, that's never a good situation.
So, before...
I have my old papers with the mill rate, I'm going to just...
I guess I would just say that it's, it's pretty darn...
Excuse me.
Bless you.
Excuse me.
It's pretty darn close to that, you know, that threshold of eliminating the LD-one vote. I know we, we're not, we're not going to quite get there, but, yeah, I'm, I'm satisfied that we've made a good faith effort to cut the budget.
Go ahead, Dan.
Um, I'm, well, yeah, I'm not done yet with my suggestions, but I propose a five-minute recess or a ten-minute recess.
I, I would, yeah, like a bio break anyway, so that sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, so I guess I would propose we come back at six forty-five.
Yes, thank you, yeah, that's a great idea. Why don't we do that? Kyle, yeah, we're just going to take a break, we're not adjourning for ten minutes.
Yeah, so I guess I would propose we come back at six forty-five.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, that's a great idea. Why don't we do that? Um, Kyle, yeah, we're just gonna, um, take a break. We're not adjourning for, um, ten minutes. ... as a reduction. What does that do as a percentage to our tax, our tax rate increase based, you know, comparatively to last year? What does it do to the potential mill rate? Like, where are we on, how is this gonna be communicated as, what kind of percentage increase are we left with over FY twenty-three? With that reduction?
I think that's an important question.
Right.
Because that's the part they're gonna be voting on.
Right. And I know it's hard to, we're doing math on the spot, nobody, that's never a good situation.
So, before.
I guess I would just say that it's, it's pretty darn.
Excuse me. Bless. Excuse me. I would agree with that.
Yeah, Anne?
Yep.
Yeah, Anne?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll also would like to do that. I know, Dan, you mentioned, I think at our first, um, budget meeting when we were starting this process, that, um, you found the wording for that warrant article to be somewhat confusing and a little bit long-winded. I don't, Nate, do we have any flexibility in how we might word that land acquisition? Because it's a little hard to understand with the borrowing of the one-twelves and the two, three-twelves requirement and that, like.
Yeah. It's because of the charter language, it's difficult to remove.
I think what we can do, though, is we may not be able to change the wording of the warrant article itself, but we can add an explanation to the article
Okay.
that clarifies it further. Uh, there's nothing that prevents us from, from, from doing that. And there may be others that we wanna do that with.
Okay.
But I think that one in particular, it's, you know, unfortunately, I, I wish everybody watched all our meetings all the time and that we had tons of people running for council and all of our committee slots were filled, but, you know, that's not the case, so when people come to the point where they have to vote, they don't always have the benefit of all the information about why that is the way it is.
Yeah.
A lot of times, it's the first time they're seeing it. I don't blame somebody for voting no on something they, they don't understand.
Right.
That really makes sense to me, so hopefully we can, um, and it's also gonna be a different format. It's going to be a, a town meeting, so there'll be plenty of opportunity to debate and talk about it, so I think, that makes me feel a little bit better about that, too.
Yeah. Okay, well, um, I'm, we're gonna move forward with keeping it definitely as a warrant, um, article. The other thing I wanted to just clarify is our bond, um, question, which is currently set at eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. We had tossed around, um, at the beginning of this process of potentially increasing that. I, just after going through this exercise with everyone the last few weeks, I don't think, I don't think we need to increase it. I think our bond will still cover the penal complex, um, changes that we need to address, um, and I don't think we needed to bond anything else. Uh, Dan, did you?
My only concern is that prices have been so volatile on things and we've seen things like, you know, our insurance wasn't as much as we thought it was gonna be, and this has changed, that I would be, I just don't wanna get to a place where we get, we borrow eight hundred, you know, thousand dollars and we find out it's not enough.
Yeah, I don't wanna get halfway through digging up a new septic and then not having enough money.
So, I guess that's my only concern. Is there a way between now and when we have to put this together that we can sort of do a reality check to make sure that we've, we've got the right number?
Well, the, the other problem is, is I believe that this quote we have for the bond expires on August twenty-fourth of this month. Is that correct?
Uh, no, that was extended at the same terms.
Oh, okay. It was, until, do you know until what, would it, would it still be in effect once we have town meeting?
In October, yeah.
Let me just double check. The, uh, the, I talked with John Simcoe about this. The terms on the lease-to-own agreements were, were expiring in August. He said there might be like twenty basis points increase going into September, but.
But those were for the vehicles?
That was for the vehicles, right. And for the bond, let me just pull this back up. This one closes on September twenty-eighth.
Okay, nine twenty, so as long as we have our meeting early September, we should be fine on that. But if we were to increase the amount, you would need to get a new ter- a new.
Get a new term sheet, yeah, but that's not a crisis.
Term sheet, but would it affect the interest rate that we've been voted?
I'd have to ask.
I would think maybe not, but you can't, can't be absolutely sure.
What, what's, what's the number you want me to ask?
Well, the,
Nine hundred?
I don't know, that's, that's my concern. If we add, if we don't just come back with the same bond number, but then we've made all these cuts to our operating budgets and capital improvements, will people just view that as essentially negating the cuts because now, now our bond's a million and this?
No, I think, I think, I mean, we'll have a valid reason for making the change if we do need to make the increase and it's also important to know that it is a, um, a bond, so if, you know, even if it increased, uh, I don't wanna say, if you added $50,000 over the life of the bond, it's not gonna be a huge increase. And I think we'd be in a position to explain that. I mean, if we, hopefully, we won't need to do that. But I think it would be worse, I think we'd be in a worse pickle if we just went with the eight, eight, eight hundred plus number and then six months from now, we're having a conversation about how we need another $50,000. I don't want it to turn into the Voltrill extension where we had three bites of that apple before we finally pared it down enough to, to be able to afford it, so we could, we could get away with that with the Voltrill. We're not gonna get away with that with the septic system here on the penal complex.
No, we're not. That's too, it's too large of a project, too much cost. Anne, did you have thoughts on increasing the amount from?
I mean, I haven't seen the, I haven't seen the budget estimate, so it's hard for me to get a handle of that, on that. Um, I, I mean, I hate to increase things, but I think Dan's right. I mean, we have seen very volatile prices and, and the construction costs show no sign of, of decreasing, um, so I, I, I guess I'd be okay with another 50 grand. Is that what you had in mind or?
I just don't know. I just thought it would be worth a quick check to see. I mean, Tim gave us $50,000 back the other night, right out of thin air.
Right, and apparently the DOT is giving us.
I'm still very uncomfortable with that, but I didn't have a chance to talk with him about it, so it is what it is.
The original bond was eight fifty?
Eight fifty, yeah.
So, I, I don't wanna, no, I don't wanna just add an arbitrary number to it just in case. I just think that if there's time, it's worth just double-checking the numbers and doing a reality check. And, and, and the hundred thou- I'm sorry.
Yeah, I lean more towards, towards, towards staying with the eight fifty.
and then six months from now, we're having a conversation about how we need another fifty thousand dollars. I don't want it to turn into the vault trail extension, where we had three bites of that apple before we finally pared it down enough to, to be able to afford it. So, we could, we could get away with that with the vault trail, we're not gonna get away with that with the septic system here on the panel complex.
No, we're not, that's too, it's too large of a project, too much cost. Um, I don't know, Anne, did you have thoughts on increasing the amount from?
I mean, I haven't seen the, I haven't seen the budget estimates, so it's hard for me to get a handle of that, on that. Um, I, uh, I mean, I hate to increase things, but I think Dan's right. I mean, we have seen very volatile prices and, and the construction costs show no sign of, of decreasing. Um, so I, I, I guess I'd be okay with another fifty grand, is that what you had in mind, or?
I just don't know, I just thought it would be worth a quick check to see. I mean, Tim gave us fifty thousand dollars back the other night, right out of thin air.
Right, and apparently the DOT is giving us...
I'm still very uncomfortable with that, but I didn't have a chance to talk with him about it, so it is what it is.
The original bond was eight fifty?
Eight fifty, yeah.
So I, I don't wanna, no, I don't wanna just add an arbitrary number to it, just in case. I just think that if there's time, it's worth just double checking the numbers and doing a reality check.
And, and, and the hundred thou, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I lean more towards, towards, towards staying with the eight fifty.
I just, all I'm asking for, Marty, is that we check and make sure that it really is gonna cost us eight fifty.
Right, so a check-in with Mo and just getting the figures updated.
That's, that's all. I'm not proposing any, any changes other than...
I, I was just gonna say the hundred thousand.
Yeah.
In the, um...
CIP reserve?
CIP reserve is, is also, would be available for that.
No, it wouldn't.
It wouldn't?
No, you have to...
Oh, well, sorry.
Oh, because that's for, that's to be used in twenty twenty-four, or twenty twenty-five, right?
Well, we can't spend money that we don't specifically appropriate funds for, so, um, that's why on, a, any extra money that comes in as revenue next year, say the revenue is, projections are higher, we can't spend that money until the next fiscal year.
We'd have to allocate it this year for that purpose, yeah.
That's the whole idea, put it in the, in the reserve account, I realize that now.
Yeah.
Kid, is, is it possible to earmark that hundred grand for an overage, um, in the panel project?
In the panel project?
Ooh, that's an interesting idea.
Yeah, maybe we could do that, could we?
Yeah.
I like that.
We could do that, actually.
Yeah.
I'd be okay with that.
Yeah, that would work for me.
Especially since this project might go beyond this year.
Hmm, I still think, you know, before we get into solving a problem we might not have, if Nate thinks that Mo can take a, take a look, take a look at the numbers and just come back and say, you know, yeah, this, this is still a reasonable estimate, I'm okay with that, we don't have to do anything. I'm just proposing, since we have the time, we double check.
Yeah, yeah. Measure twice, cut once.
Yeah, exactly, especially when eight hundred thousand dollars is in the... When it's an eight hundred thousand.
Okay, but then...
Yep.
What, so say Mo comes, I, cause we're not meeting between now and next Tuesday, so if Mo has new figures tomorrow, uh, what are we okay with proceeding? Are we okay with increasing the bond amount at, at Mo's recommendation? Or do we need to come back and talk about it again? Yeah, go ahead.
If Mo comes back with a different number, we can vote on Tuesday to adjust our agenda and take it up then.
Okay, but I don't think we need to vote on it, it wouldn't be a vote on Tuesday, it would just be a conversation.
No, we would have to vote to change the agenda.
Yes, to add another discussion item.
Right.
I could add a warrant article action item, uh, with a budget discussion, and you could use that as a catch-up.
Yeah, that would work, and then if we don't need it, we don't need it.
Okay.
That'd also work, either way, I mean, there's mechanisms to do it.
That's fine, I just wanna have a process simply so that we're not scrambling, um, with this new information, um...
We can always adjust our agenda, it just takes four of us to vote yes.
Yes, yeah. Okay, and then, so, that's good, and then, um, the vault extension, we had decided to fund that ex, the extra cost towards those through either Sub D or Enterprise, but do we need to make a decision before this process on which account we're pulling from?
I had it as Sub D.
Just Sub D, cause we were a little concerned about the balance on that.
I, I know, uh, I'm still working on the numbers with the Little League.
Okay.
So...
Congratulations, Steve, to the...
Oh, I know, that's so fantastic. Did they win today?
Uh, they won the states, yeah.
Oh, oh, yes, they did win the states.
But they did win today, I saw that.
Oh, great.
I think, I think I saw that.
Okay, so...
Um, let me see if I can get...
I don't think that impacts our budget very big here, but I just don't wanna lose track of it, um, so that's fine.
Actually, one of my things on the, my own personal to-do list is for us to take up the Sub D account and what we're collecting for that, and I think we need to increase that amount.
Fair enough.
Cause that was said a long time ago.
So... So, I, I think we're in a pretty good place, I guess the only remaining thing that was really a question aside from the bond amount, um, was this fifty thousand dollar HR reserve fund, but you are, you don't have firm figures.
I, I don't have any specifics.
Do you think you'll have firm figures on that by Tuesday?
I hope so.
Okay, so perhaps we can also talk about that?
I have to, yeah.
Okay. Okay, is there, kinda last call for, is there anything else anybody wanted to address with this budget before we move forward with producing warrant articles?
I've been shut off, so...
I, I know, like, line by line, line by line items, I'm just, is there anything big picture things I'm not, I'm not thinking of, I guess, is what I'm asking.
I can't think, I can't think of anything.
Okay, so, wow, look, Anne, we did it in, uh, well, two hours, not one hour, one hour.
Two hours is reasonable.
I'm, I'm very happy, well done, everyone.
All right, so I, uh, think we can adjourn then at, um, what time is it on the seven, exactly, seven o'clock PM? Thank you so much, everyone.
Yeah, good night, everyone.
Good work.